Our feed is up. Okay, so, good morning then, everybody. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Palm Desert. Today is September 13th, 2022, and I do have some introductory remarks. Apologize for the delay. We're still working on that Zoom connection, and we have Vice President Estrada trying to get on, so he'll be joining the meeting when that's connected. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2022-10. Today's meeting is presented in a hybrid format, in person at CBWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. Members of the public may participate in person or via Zoom. Zoom details are listed on the meeting agenda, and of course, that's when Zoom gets back up and running. Meeting is streamed live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on the agenda, on any item on the agenda or within the jurisdiction of the district, have three minutes. Public comment may be provided in person via Zoom or by emailing the clerk of the board. Such comments will become part of the board meeting record, and assuming that we do have a board member participating remotely, we'll make sure to call on him specifically so that he is given the opportunity to participate, and all action will be taken by roll call vote. That's that. And so, getting into the agenda, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada, we know is on Zoom but unable to participate. Director Bianco?
Here.
Director Aguilar?
Can you hear me?
Oh, okay, there you are. We can hear you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on. I just can't see the feed, but I can hear you and I can talk.
Okay, great. So Vice President Estrada is present, Director Aguilar is absent, and Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Good. All right, well, that's good to know. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
Nor I. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time?
Not present.
Don't see anybody here. No raised hands on the Zoom.
No raised hands on Zoom.
So we'll assume that that is...
We only have one attendee, which is a member of BBK, and I don't anticipate he would have public comment.
Okay, so it's working, is my point?
Yes. It's just the video feed going out. There isn't a feed.
Yeah, got it. Okay. I don't know why I'm doing the paper agenda. Consent calendar, there's items 5A through F. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Just want to check in with Vice President Estrada before we move forward.
No issues.
No issues, all right. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you, 4O.
Yep. On to action. Making up some lost time. Engineering. Armando, good morning. Go ahead and take the item, item 7A.
Good morning, President Powell. Members of the board.
Morning.
Failure of staff in. My name for the record is Armando Rodriguez with the Engineering Department. The purpose of this board item is to seek authorization for their request for proposals for the pre-selection of ration equipment for the Warp 7 Plan Numbers, or Water Reclamation Plan Number 7, the region improvement project. This pre-selection will allow staff in the engineer record to evaluate blower equipment. This blower equipment is quite varied in the industry. There's about six or seven manufacturers, and so we would like to make sure that the selected blower meets the performance of the project, but also that we also secure a price, a maximum price for the equipment. We'll be doing this through a letter of intent, and we'll be including this letter of intent in the bid documents. We anticipate that the blower equipment, it's somewhere between $700,000 to $800,000, though there's had been some, there's been some cost escalation even within, when we got the proposals about four or five months ago, and so we anticipate maybe another hundred grand or so. Would the board like a presentation, or is there a specific questions I can answer?
It's $800,000 for all the blower equipment? Or, I mean, are there multiple?
There's multiple equipment that we're purchasing, but in addition to the equipment, we will like to have an extended warranty item and also a service agreement. That way, we can protect these blowers within the first couple of years, and then also we are able to get some maintenance and some education as well in that maintenance. So there's a multi-pronged approach to this purchase.
I don't need a presentation.
No, I don't need a presentation. I just, I mean, we have $5 million budgeted for sanitation this year, so I just want to stress that that's where we want to stay.
We do the best we can, Mr. Bianco.
I just have a general question, Armando. And, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So, so there's been a few projects, I think, that have, that have, that have at one point been presented to the board. I think we've heard out of all those presentations that, that there are some improvements that are needed. I believe some of it had to do with our ability to be able to provide supply to folks in the area, and so I think there was, at one point, like it needs to, I don't know if it was to upsize certain pumps, but maybe it was more on the, on the non potable side than on the actual, maybe upgrades on the, on the plant itself. Can you just help me understand, or maybe clarify if this is part of, of any sort of component that's required as part of these other projects that I've mentioned? Or is this strictly related to wastewater treatment and not so much any sort of upgrades as it relates to the non potable side?
Yes. So, the capacity concern in regards to us being able to expand the tertiary and also the non potable pump stations, that's, that's a project that we're actually ongoing now. And yes, it is, we need additional capacities so we can serve the non potable water connections that we're planning to connect, and that's a separate project. This, this particular, it really is the focus is reliability and being able to meet the existing wastewater flow, because these blowers are already 26 years old, and they're tied to medium voltage, 4160 volts, that make it really hard for us to actually work on. Actually, we can't, we're not experienced enough to do that. So it really is a reliability issue that we really got to be able to fix these blowers and upgrade them, not only to meet the existing need now, this is one project that keeps me up at night, because if the blowers fail, we just lost the water reclamation plan. So it's a reliability issue for me.
Okay, okay, thank you, that makes sense, Armando, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve 7A?
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Yes. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you, 4O.
Thank you.
Thanks, Armando. 7B, Construction Dan.
Good morning. Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I'm here today to request authorization to award a construction contract to the Van Dyke Corporation in the amount of $255,889, as well as authorize the general manager to execute a purchase order with West Coast Sand and Gravel for aggregate in the amount of $96,565, for a total project request of $413,000. So this project is related to our Highway 86 Transmission Main Phase 2 project, which we completed back in December of 2020. Part of that project involves constructing an above-ground pipeline on Lincoln Street to span three washes. Almost exactly a year ago, the Oasis area experienced a tremendous rain event, and one of the washes that we span widened, it in fact doubled in width, and when it did that, it wiped out the ground underneath one of the concrete pipe supports, and that picture is dark in the inset, but it's a concrete pipe support hanging in midair. So this project is intended to install riprap on the slopes of those three washes to prevent further erosion and to install two new concrete pipe supports. So this pipe does serve our salt and sea communities, so it is an important transmission main for us. In the future, we are looking at rerouting our Phase 3 pipeline around this area to avoid this condition in the future.
So the pipe itself is still functional?
It is still functional.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. Pretty good.
Yeah, we had installed a very thick steel casing, which supports the pipeline inside it, but still, we need to fix that condition, though.
Why is this pipe above ground?
So there are three washes on Lincoln Street, and so because of the jurisdictional and permitting issues, it would have been tremendously expensive, if not impossible, to secure the permits to go in and excavate in those washes, so this was a far better option at that time.
Got it. Yeah, it's interesting, huh? Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve 7B? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion Bianco, second, Estrada.
Ready? President Powell?
Here. All right, I think we're good.
We're good? Okay. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you, 4O.
I like driving out there and looking at that.
Just want to let you know that I can see you again.
Oh.
Yes, Zoom is officially back on at the moment.
How do we look?
Look good, look good.
You don't want to know, Joe.
You look marvelous. See, huh, Zoe, go ahead.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This item is seeking authorization to enter into two five-year joint funding agreements with the United States Geological Services to continue water resources investigations in the Coachella Valley for water years 2023 through 2027. We've been conducting these collaborative investigations, essentially stream gauging, since 1967, and we bring this item to the board every year. What is different this year is that we're seeking a five-year joint funding agreement. The justification for that is, in talking to the United States Geological Service, they are beginning to lose their funding or be funding challenged, so that they were predicting that our contribution would need to increase almost on an annual basis. So we began this discussion of having a five-year agreement. The benefit of a five-year agreement is that it locks in the cost, so we're less sensitive to fluctuations if their funding decreases further. The costs are shown in the board item in Table, Table 1. By the way, this is the location of the stream gauges. We have quite a few of them throughout the valley. At any rate, in terms of the cost, for Water Year 2023 would be $146,225 total, of which our annual cost would be $111, so $111,825 for one and $34,400 for the second JFA, for a total contribution of $146,225. The annual increase would go up a little bit each year, but would be kept under 2.7% at 2.68 for the final year.
Yeah, no, I think it's smart, good at that.
So we are seeking to enter into both of those agreements, and I'm happy to take any questions, but I think the benefit of controlling cost increases is really the reason for asking for five years.
Question, Zoe, with the five-year decision, does that lock USGS in with us to provide those services for the five-year period? In other words, if their funding gets reduced or doesn't go as far, and we have this contract, would they reduce their partnership or services if their funding was reduced, or does this lock them in to the services?
We are locked into this agreement, so if their funding reduces, they cannot come back and say, we want you to contribute more. And because they are predicting that their funding's going to be reduced, it is a benefit to lock in these costs in their contribution now.
Okay, but would that then, if their funding is reduced, has that then diminished their participation in the partnership?
No, no, no. Both sides get locked in. It's a, it's a joint funding agreement, so their contribution's locked in, our contribution's locked in for the five-year period.
Okay, that's great. Good.
I'd move approval.
Second. Okay.
President Powell?
Well, I just want to make sure Director Estrada is, doesn't have any comments or concerns.
No, I don't have any comments.
All right, yeah, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you, 4O.
Thanks, Zoe. Good morning. And take the D.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So this item is for, to adopt a resolution to accept the repayment contract with Bureau of Reclamation for the extraordinary maintenance costs of the 10 irrigation lateral replacement project for $60,931,000. Currently, we are trying to get the fiscal year 2022 rates, which is at 1.875% to get this loan, so that's about estimated about $2.6 million annually for the next 30 years. So if you have any other specific questions on the project itself, I can answer.
I don't understand why we're calling it a repayment contract and not a loan.
That's how they, that's how they describe it under contract agreements, so we're just kind of trying to use their language, but it is really a loan agreement, but that's how they classify it under contracts.
So Carrie, can you, can you describe a little bit more of the cash flow, how this, when we, when we draw the money, when we're obligated to pay it back? How does that work?
So currently, so the 10 lateral projects is going to be scheduled out. Jerry can probably provide a little bit more of the schedule for that. So as we complete each project, we turn in receipts, and then we draw the funds, so that's when they start creating the repayment agreement, I mean, the calculations. So it depends on when we draw the funds. So if we do anticipate completing, hopefully, at least the first project in 2024, then we submit for reimbursement, and it triggers the repayment calculations.
And the interest rates are locked in?
It's locked in.
If it takes us eight to 10 years to do this, it'll...
It will be locked in at that. So estimated, we're pushing to get the 1.875, because the federal calendar starts in October, so we're trying to beat that calendar, so it doesn't apply the new, the new rates for fiscal year 2023.
And so to that point, it's probably in the memo, and I didn't catch it, but how long do we have to draw the funds? Is it, is it two years, three years, five years?
That's one thing that I've kind of working still with Bureau of Reclamation. It was not specific on the contract agreement itself. It does say substantial completion of the work, but there's no specific schedule on it.
I was just, in kind of relation to our capital improvement budget and, you know, how we plan things out, I was kind of concerned about that.
So, my concern is that six out of the 10 laterals, in my opinion, are in the closest proximity to growth. And so, aren't those laterals, as growth comes in, going to be, we're going to fix them and put brand-new laterals in, and then we're going to end up, they're going to be not needed?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe, I know that's not a question.
How specific for engineering, it's, you know, the question about the project itself, maybe either Carrie or David can help me with the specific projects. I can answer the financial piece and the purpose of the project.
No, that's a good, that's a good answer. So I see David's coming up, and I kind of had that same kind of gut feeling.
I mean, it's $6 million per lateral.
Is there a way that someone could share an exhibit that shows the location of? I mean, I think you guys have a pretty good sense of where these laterals are at. I try to look for an exhibit, and I get the point you're making, Director Bianco, I just, from the top of my head, I, I don't know where these laterals are at.
So I sent an email out yesterday with a map attached to it.
Okay, that was, that was, okay, I remember that.
And is that up on, is the, is our screen up on Zoom now?
It is, but it's just, because of still some of the technical issues, it's just the camera capturing it, so it's not a very clear image of it, unfortunately, but it was sent via email yesterday.
Go ahead, David.
All right, I was just waiting to see if... Yeah, so I sent it out yesterday at 11:42. If that helps you locate it. Okay.
No, I have it, I have it.
Good. So these were, these laterals were chosen. We developed a master plan a few years ago to develop a plan of attack with respect to improvements. We considered development and growth, and in general, most of the areas that were in close proximity to any potential future development were considered lower unless those laterals were laterals that, that had more, more current demand on them. And so these laterals are the highest priority for us. We've worked them out with both off of that master plan and working with facilities of maintenance on historic maintenance through these lines.
So, don't we need these laterals to continue delivering canal water to golf courses?
In some cases, yes.
I mean, I'm looking at number three, right? I mean, I don't know the specifics about number three, but we just hooked up Madison Clubber, we're in the process of getting their canal water, right? Imagine it, if it doesn't flow through number three, there might be other... My point is, even if it develops into something other than agriculture, it doesn't mean they're not going to be using canal water.
Yeah, we didn't have, we did not have an expectation that these, that any of these laterals close to development were going to be abandoned or even replaced in upcoming, in the near future.
So...
We expect full utilization on these lines.
Okay, I mean, maybe, it just seems like you would use main lines to go another section instead of laterals. Laterals mean that it would be, you know, for the, for the, for maybe the section that's around, you know, the 600 acres.
I think we're, the semantics, we tend to call them all laterals, but they're all, and generally, these aren't main lines, they wouldn't be what we would call a sublateral. These would be main lines, and we will bring each of these projects to the board before we were, before we would go out to advertise for beds to construct.
I just think you guys should look at those to make sure that we're, you know, some, a lot of these are close to where development's going to happen, probably in the next 10 to 20 years. I just want to make sure we're spending this kind of money, that we're, we're doing it in the right place, that's going to be utilized for a long time.
Understood.
And then, you know, there are two number sixes on here, on the map.
That appears to be the case, yes.
I guess number six out there on the mountain is probably not right.
Well, it may be, because we have, we have Thomas E. Levy over there, right?
It's down here, yeah. I mean, it's, that one's kind of near the quarry. I mean, I guess it's near, that's near the new Coral Mountain.
If you look down below in the description, number six has two different, two different items to it.
Right. So, so those two number sixes are for the same project, but they're two box replacements?
I see.
Oh, so...
I have a question, was, there's a chance.
Go ahead, Kessler.
So, okay, so I think, David, you answered some questions about the semantics between laterals and main lines. I think you said that laterals are the main lines. And so, I guess the question that comes to my mind is, you know, are all these, I guess I don't, by looking at this exhibit, I don't have a sense of the length of that lateral, you know, is it, is it traversing, you know, so many parcels, going from, you know, point of beginning to point of end? And, and then you mentioned that you plan to bring these individual projects, which I think by looking at this contract, it looks like they're all kind of standalone, and that's why you have different exhibits for each one of them for repayment. And I don't know if you've listed them in an order of priority, or if there's an opportunity to kind of, as a board, maybe as we try to answer some of these questions of relevance or priority, whether maybe we need to look at exactly what the run is for each of these laterals, and maybe try to come up with some sort of priority between these 10 projects? Are we, are we locked in in any sort of way as priorities based on the contracts, or can we activate each one of these projects in any order?
I don't believe there's anything in the contract that locks us into the, to the order of things.
Yeah, I think, I think moving forward, before we even initiate any one project, we should get a real sense of the run of this lateral, from, you know, the ones that are laterals, not the box replacements, but, but I think it does make sense to at least try to get a sense, you know, what the run is, and, and, you know, what's adjacent to that run, and whether we feel that there's going to be some sort of development there or not. I just think the more information, the better. It is a lot of money, $60 million. Some projects are bigger than others. I think to President Powell's point, some projects might be kind of, you know, feeding other pipes, so if there's a problem with that one, then it maybe creates problems downstream. So I guess, I'd just like to get more information as we even begin to think about what project goes first, you know? That's the request that I have.
You know, I mean, just from my own experience, some of these laterals are in really bad shape and probably should have been replaced 10 or 20 years ago. It's been, you know, a slow process, and my understanding is that these, some of them don't... And my understanding is that these, some of them don't get replaced because there's others that have even more problems. I mean, it's, it's an old system. A question on the contract, the, these 10 projects, I mean, is, what if we decided to sub, yeah, sub out, you know, one of them and put in something else? Would the contract allow us to do that?
We can request for an amendment on the contract. And also, again, we're not tied into the whole 60.9. If we end up either not doing a project or the project comes in a lot lower, we can just submit it, close it out, and then just encumber the funds.
Okay, good, good answer. All right.
That's a big question, too.
Yeah.
One more question just related to the map. On the right-hand side, next to where the canal and the Improvement District 1 is, it says Canal Regional Park. What is that?
Yeah, I do not, I do not know. This is, this is off of our GIS and I'm not real clear where they pulled that data from.
That is where that little airfield is that we've rented out.
Oh, model airplanes.
Model airplanes.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. That's my stump.
Yeah, that is. Yeah, model airplanes. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Mr. Powell, I'd move approval of item, what are we on?
7D.
D, 7D, as presented and recommended by staff.
I'll second your motion. I think we're ready to vote, right? Roll call, please.
If there's a further discussion, I just, I just want to make sure that the gym, if you could please follow up with the follow-up exhibit showing those runs. I think it'd be important for me.
Yeah, we can either bring those back as, as the projects go out for bid or is the request that there be some summary overview of everything before we put anything out to bid? I mean, do you really want to get into that level of detail or do you want to staff?
Don't we already have these projects?
I think for now, I'd just like to know the length of the project. That, you know, here's where it starts, here's where it ends.
Yeah, we have those.
They're identified in the capital improvement budget.
Yeah, it's already there. I think so, right? So if you could just, if you could just package up, if you could just package up those 10 and send them out, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Perfect, that works. Thank you.
Yeah, I've seen these before. All right, so we do have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was the important one, right?
Yes.
The one that was urgent. Good luck on getting the right fiscal year. That's a big, that's a big thing, Carrie. To get the right, to get the last, the current fiscal year instead of the old rate, which is lower. Yeah, let's do it. That's, good luck. 7E, Operations. Olivia, Non-Potable with Tamarisk. Good morning.
Olivia, is your mic on?
Olivia Bennett, Non-Potable Water Operations. Good morning. This item is requesting the approval and authorization of the General Manager to execute the non-potable water agreement for Tamarisk Country Club. Tamarisk Country Club owns a well and they pay the West Rack currently. They would be a type A non-potable water customer and they have agreed to meet at least 80% of their irrigation demand with non-potable water once it's connected and built. They would be connected on the low-pressure system expansion from Warp 10. We already have a line in Portola. It's going to be expanded up to Frank Sinatra and then west out to Tamarisk Country Club. And we have a clean water state revolving fund loan agreement to pay for the non-potable pipeline expansion along with nine other, or eight other customers. And it's expected to be completed, the construction, in 2024 and 2025.
Great. Is there a motion to approve 7E?
Motion. Second.
Motion, second. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good. It's passed 4-0.
Thanks, Olivia.
That one's faster than the Hoveley one.
Be done in two years. Yeah, you have to drive on that. I drive through there all the time, Eldorado and Hoveley. Hoveley and Eldorado, yeah.
Right by this morning, like, I can't...
Come on, Jenna.
I'll be honest, I intentionally drive through there just to see how it's going and the traffic has been moving pretty well. I mean, the whole project, they've, they've done a pretty good job of keeping the traffic moving. Oh, God. 7F. Jenna.
Good morning. Jenna, Conservation and Conservation Manager for Water Management. Bringing an item before you to request an additional $3 million to go towards rebate programs.
All in favor?
That would be great. Just to give you a quick update, to recap where we began with all the drought restrictions and then to update that we adopted the drought penalties to reflect item 2.5, the 10% decrease to our water budgets, and then the drought penalties that went into place on September 1st. And just to let you know, we have to, for September 1st through September 12th, we did charge $475,000 worth of drought penalties primarily in tier, from tier three customers.
Let me ask you a question before we get too far. I think everyone's in favor of this, but this is going to be an additional $3 million on top of what we're already collecting?
So this will be, we, the board approved $2.85 million for rebates, which we've already expended or reserved. So this would be an additional $3 million on top of that for additional rebates.
Right, but we don't know exactly how much. We have an idea. I mean, you just said we collected an additional $400,000 that's going to go into this.
Correct.
Right, so this is going to be on top of the 2.8 plus 3 plus what we get in per month?
No.
No.
No, this would be asking for $3 million independent of the drought penalties.
Right, we can't spend the drought penalty money without authorization from the board to spend it. We're expecting that the drought penalties will fill that $3 million addition.
Right, okay, so now I get it, okay.
Thank you.
We need authorization.
We anticipate that we will be collecting that, those funds, so we're just basically authorizing the expenditure.
Yeah, I mean, we've already had almost half a million and not even half the month.
Right, it could be more.
Correct.
Right.
Especially if we get into the smaller budget months.
Oh, and the penalties were about half a million?
475,000, excuse me, for roughly 11 billion days.
And there's a lot of months coming up, so, okay.
So just to let you know where we're at so far, we are almost expended all of the funds from our partnership with the City Ranch Mirage and they dedicated a total of $2 million to add to the turf conversion program. On Thursday, the City of Palm Desert will be considering putting in $1 million towards turf conversions within the city. What that's going to look like will depend upon what the council adopts because the staff have given them several options, but that's the expectation. So we know that much like the City Ranch Mirage, where that initial amount they approved was reserved within eight business days, we expect this to go similarly quickly so there'll be, bring a lot of more participation to our rebate programs. And thankfully, not just to turf, it does drive people to all of our other programs, but obviously primarily to the turf. And with drought penalties now in place, we're also seeing uptick in participation in our programs. And so while I can never completely answer your question, Director Powell, about, President Powell, about how many weather-based irrigation controllers are in the service area on their own independently, we've installed over 5,000. And just this fiscal year, in the last two months, we've installed 23. We did a social media post a week and a half ago that drove about 15 applications per day. Unfortunately, that coincided with a supply chain shortage and so there's a, the components that we installed, we ran out of and is on backorder. So we do have some that should be coming this week and we've got more on order. And so we put a slowdown on that program, but we anticipate much more participation in that just because of the social media posts, but also word will start to get out. And so right now, we have 29 pending applications for that, that we're just waiting for the parts to install. That's the ones we've talked to, not the customers we haven't even gotten to respond to.
Right, okay, that's something. Thanks for updating.
So trying, trying to give you an answer there.
Yeah.
And just so you can see historically, during the last drought, obviously, there was a big uptick in participation when drought penalties went into place last time, both in square footage and in just actual customer participation. And that's just a little breakdown so you can see what sectors did the most removals. And so some future programs that we're looking at implementing as well, that this, these $3 million would help fund is a partnership through the California Water Efficiency Partnership. We're a member agency of them. And so what they do is they have a partnership with RACIO, which does, is a Wi-Fi irrigation controller and it's also a very smart, snazzy-looking little one. And then also Flume, which is a device that attaches to your meter and can help the customers know what their usage is as they chime in. It can also give them leak alerts. And what's nice about this through the partnership is we can also purchase them at a discounted rate. And if we have customers who are experiencing problems and they just can't find it somewhere, we can attach it for a limited period of time and then help them identify it. We would also have access to this data so we can see kind of indoor use versus outdoor use and kind of do our own internal studies. Flume also has a really great online platform that tracks this data and provides it to you as well. And so the, we would have a cost share in that to help bring the cost down for our customers for both programs. We're working with Purchasing right now to go over the contracts to see if everything is agreeable to what we, insurance and all that we prefer. And so we did budget for this already, but as I mentioned, you know, the other programs are already, have a lot of money, a lot of money reserved, so this would help fund those. And also, we hope that these will be successful and popular and we would, you know, want to put more money into this in the future as well. So that's everything we have on the horizon.
Thank you, yeah. I use a RACIO and a Flume and I think Flume's gone through some iterations and their latest one is better.
Yeah, there's, the second one supposedly doesn't have to be as attached to the meter or the dial and register as much.
They had battery issues and all kinds of stuff, but I think they're better now. And the RACIO is just really awesome. I love it.
Can you, can you change via Wi-Fi on your phone the RACIO, your timer and so forth?
Yeah, I mean, I can do it right now from here.
Yeah, it's full. There's no, there's no buttons on the device. It's all through your phone.
What could we use the money for if we didn't vote yes? What else could we use it for?
As far as I understand, all, it's going to be for conservation efforts so we could put more effort into doing our onsite inspections and helping customers just with efficiencies as far as around other irrigation. That's where most would be. I don't know exactly how some of the legalities work there. I know DWA, Desert Water Agency has like a leak repair program. So there's things like that, but it all has to be conservation-based. I will say there, the state is putting $75 million into turf conversion throughout the state, so it's a big push statewide to get, especially non-functional turf out. And that's kind of our focus as well.
So if the state's coming up with $75 million, how does that program work?
They haven't laid that out yet. They just started talking about it. I think the staff had to have a proposal to the governor by Friday and so we haven't heard anything yet.
I'm sure CBW will be...
Yeah, so when I, I think when I did my program years ago and through the district and there was a state component too and I got, I got money from the state too. So, I mean, that was all, that was all good, right? And so as soon as that comes out, you know, if we could, you know, do the, do the best we can to, you know, marry those two and just like Rancher Mirage, right? Heck, in Rancher Mirage, if they had the state and us and the city, you know, that'd be, that's a, that's a big number.
It is. Thank you. All right, so we need a motion to approve 7F.
I would move item 7F to increase the conservation program payments by $3 million and additional rebate program participation.
I'll second that motion. Estrada, haven't heard anything. We're okay, right? Roll call vote, please.
President?
I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Regarding the, you mentioned, well...
Hello?
Regarding the Palm Desert match, are they also matching their $1 million to our $3 per square foot?
So we're not exactly sure what they will do as far as their, their match. Staff have proposed a $1 or $2 match for commercial properties for large landscape properties and then a $2 to $3 match for residential properties and it's all onto what the council adopts. So they have the options to choose how they'd like the program to go. So we'll find out, I think, Thursday afternoon, I think, is the meeting. So we'll find out Thursday.
And Rancher's, Rancher's match is strictly turf, if not to any of the other programs?
Credit, just for the turf conversion. And they did initially $3 and now it's $3 for residential and one for a commercial, large landscape.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenna.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mays?
We have a public hearing.
I hear you have a script, huh?
I do have a script, so we're going to do that right now. To get into our public hearing, first, we're going to have staff provide a presentation on the notice of availability of a report on domestic water quality relative to public health goals and to accept and respond to public comments on this report as authorized by Chapter 4, Article 5, Section 116470 of the Health and Safety Code. Following the presentation, we will open the public hearing. And making the presentation is Randy Mays, Water Quality Supervisor, who will provide us with an overview of the Public Health Goals Report.
Thank you, good morning. This is the ninth Public Health Goal Report for Coachella Valley Water District. It's been prepared since 1998. The Public Health Goal Report, let me see if I can get to the next slide here.
Just use the arrow.
All right. The Public Health Goal Report has been prepared for our Cove Public Water System that serves the area from approximately Cathedral City to communities adjacent to the Salton Sea. It's our largest public water system with greater than 10,000 service connections. The Public Health Goal Report has been prepared in accordance with the California Health and Safety Code. It identifies constituents that are detected in our source water at levels above the California Public Health Goal or USIPA's maximum contaminant level goal. These goals represent the level of a constituent in drinking water below which there is no known or expected risk to health. Keep in mind, the California's Public Health Goals or USIPA's maximum contaminant level goals are set 1 and 1 millionth risk level. These goals are not enforceable and are often set well below drinking water standards that must be set at levels that are technically and economically feasible to meet. For each constituent detected, the report must identify the health risk, describe best available technology to reduce the constituent levels, estimate the cost to implement the best available technology and describe any actions to meet the goals. A public hearing must be held and the process must be repeated every three years. This slide shows constituents that were detected above the Public Health Goal for water samples collected from 2019 to 2021. All four of these constituents were included in the previous Public Health Goal Reports. All four goals listed next to the constituents represent the numeric goal. The maximum level detected lists the highest level detected in our wells, which are all below the drinking water standard that's listed in the fourth column for maximum contaminant level. All four listed constituents include risks for cancer over a lifetime. The best available technologies identified for these constituents are reverse osmosis and granular activated carbon, which are the same technologies that were identified in the 2019 Public Health Goal Report. Reverse osmosis is the same technology used to desalinate seawater. Naturally occurring arsenic is found in our wells located in the portion of the eastern Coachella Valley and treatment facilities have been installed to reduce levels in which the wells are above the drinking water standard. Testing for one well detected DBCP below the drinking water standard. DBCP is an ingredient in pesticide that was banned in 1986. Natural uranium, which is relatively abundant in rocks and sediment, is found in most Coachella Valley wells and is the source of gross alpha particle activity. The estimated analyzed cost to install best available technologies for the 70 wells in the Cove system with detectable constituents above the Public Health Goals levels is $255 million. This represents an annual cost of $2,298 per customer. This estimated cost is... This estimated cost is 87% higher than USIPA's affordability threshold of two and a half times the median household income, which is $1,228 per customer per year. In summary, the drinking water served from the Cove Water System meets drinking water standards, and it is uncertain if the identified best available technology can meet non-enforceable goals set at or close to zero. The cost to implement the best available technologies significantly exceeds the USIPA's affordability threshold is not economically feasible. Staff recommends that CBW continue evaluating future water treatment advancements to identify technologies that are technically and economically feasible to implement to meet these health goals. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Randy. Do we have any board, before we go into the public hearing, any board questions or comments?
Yes, President Powell.
Yeah.
Randy, did you, um, thank you for the presentation. Did you talk a little bit about some of what we're already doing to try to get within those treatment options that I think we still need to, as it relates to the chromium 6, that we still need to provide some maybe additional findings or information to the state water boards? That, I'm not sure that I heard much about that, but if you didn't cover it, can you kind of give us an update on, on what that entails and where we're at with that?
Yes, absolutely. So this presentation, we don't have an active MCL for chromium 6 at this time, hexavalent chromium. And so the public health goal that we are concerned with is DBCP, arsenic, uranium, gross alpha. Those are the ones that are focal points at this time. Again, you know, the available treatment options for hexavalent chromium are fairly expensive. Ion exchange, reduced coagulation filtration options. The, this district has had a fantastic opportunity with stanus chloride back in 2017 to pilot a study. And so at some point when the MCL is released, I would, I would presume that the district would pursue that avenue. And so I hope that addresses your question.
It does. Thank you. I, I see what you're saying now. You're not covering chromium, chromium 6 here on this public hearing. Maybe I'll just say my comments, general comments about that for board member comments. So thank you. Thank you for your answer.
Thanks. At this, this is the time and place for a public hearing to receive public comments on the Public Health Goals Report. Clerk Bermudez, have we completed proper notification of this hearing?
Yes, Mr. President. A notice of the public hearing was published in both the Desert Sun and Imperial Valley Press newspapers of general circulation.
Thank you. So I hereby declare the public hearing open. Does anyone attending this public hearing wish to be heard? If so, please give your name and address and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Nobody?
And we don't have any attendees online as well?
Yeah, so I'm not hearing any. Have we received any written communications?
We have not, but I am just double checking my incoming mail. Make sure we haven't received anything this morning, and we have not.
Thank you. Counsel Frey, will you please comment on this public hearing?
The board has given the public the right to be heard during this public hearing. All legal requirements have been satisfied in regard to notice of availability of report on domestic water quality relative to public health goals.
Okay. And I'm still not hearing any public, so we're going to move on. There being no further input to the notice of availability of report on domestic water quality relative to public health goals, I hereby declare the public hearing closed. There is no formal vote or action needed from the board. However, staff is looking for direction and is requesting authorization to continue evaluating future advancements in water treatment to identify technology capable of meeting all drinking water public health goals and MCL goals that would be economically feasible to implement. And of course, we're waiting on news from the state on the MCL for chrome 6.
If I may, Mr. President, I would recommend a motion just to receive and file to acknowledge that it has been received, there has been a public hearing, the board has considered it.
Okay. Is there a motion to receive and file this report?
Sue. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Hi.
Vice President Estrada.
Hi.
Director Bianco.
Hi.
And Director Nelson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
That went well. 9A, we did have some written communications. There are C3 of them listed on this handout. I'm sure you're doing a good job providing facts, right, Scott? Good. It's hard to get the facts out, I mean, honestly. Let's see, 10A, Board General Comments. Why don't we start with Vice President Estrada?
Yes, thank you. I, um, I think the, the thought that comes to my mind that I wanted to comment on is, you know, I think it might be good for us to get another update on chromium 6 just to see where we're at. I know that, I know that Steve Bigley's on top of it and he's constant, constantly and talks with folks at the state and probably it's up to speed on every, not probably, he is. And so I just think it might be good for us to get a, a quick update on, on what we're doing. I know that we might be doing some, some testing already. I, I did, I believe I heard from, from staff over maybe last week. I brought up the issue at one of the SAFR meetings that I had on, on Friday. I had a SAFR meeting with the state water board. And I asked a question to staff at the water board whether, whether the, the funding that, that was created by SB 200 would be available for any sort of pilot projects. They've created a, a section of pilot projects under SB 200. And I asked them if perhaps that could be used for chromium 6. Shared with them that I, that I looked at communities that have chromium 6 as systems at risk. And so that is something that, that they fund. And the answer was yes, we can, we can fund the pilot project with the money. So it might, it might be good for us to, to get a sense of where we're at with any sort of pilot testing. I, I do understand that I think we set some budget aside to do some large-scale pilot testing for chromium 6 already. I, I just kind of want to get a sense of where we're at with, with, with all of that related to chromium 6.
Okay, we can get that scheduled for a future board meeting. Today?
Thank you.
We have to put it on the agenda, I think, Steve.
Yeah, for a future board meeting is fine.
If you wanted to get any need level of detail, we should have added it as an agenda.
Right. Okay, we'll see how deep you get into the details and then figure out whether or not we have to agendize it for a future meeting.
High level. We probably could have put it into the.
Into Randy's report.
Into Randy's report. Too late. We're not going to reopen the public hearing. Okay, good. Yeah, I look forward to that. All right, next, Director Nelson.
Sure, so just a few comments. And it's probably going to be kind of directed, jammed to, you know, the conservation area. And I'm, you know, it's just great to see that we're investing all of these drought penalties to come to, you know, back into the system, right? So if we could, probably for, you know, our communication ability is to have some, you know, one-page infographics about, or, you know, graphs or, or just data that, you know, is presented that is kind of, is all aggregated in one place to just show, you know, maybe what we've done, how many, how many, you know, square feet of turf or acres of turf, how much water's been saved, things like that. So that, you know, goes on, Scott, your, your kind of to-do list. But, and maybe you have it, and, and, and that's great. If we could just keep those coming and updating those as, as they come along. Because I think, you know, there's a real need to, to tell the story in, in a, in a, in a positive way. I mean, California's getting kind of thrown under the bus right now in terms of Colorado River public awareness, right? And so Arizona and Nevada are, are really taking a lot of pot shots at California, even though Matt has stored, you know, one and a half million acre feet of water in Lake Mead over the last, you know, 10 years to help support those levels. And, and so our agency's not that big, but if, if we could help tell that story, I think that'd be helpful.
If I could just quickly, I think we mentioned this before in the GM report on activities, last page is about water management. And it shows residential smart controllers, large landscape smart controllers, desert landscaping rebate. And over the last 12 months, there's been over 1,153,000 square feet of desert landscaping done.
Yeah, so could you put that in like a, like a one-pager kind of thing? That is just kind of directed to that?
Sure.
I mean, even if you send that, but, you know, keep it updated and.
Sure.
And keep all those numbers, you know, going.
So I would like to add to that, that we are updating the General Manager Report, adding more infographics and charts at the, for the next board meeting. So if you're agreeable with that after you see it, then we can have a separate page on the website. We did create a Colorado River page on, on the regional issues on the website. And we did include some, some of the talking points and some of the conservation efforts that we've undertaken over the last decades.
Okay, great. So that's up and running, that Colorado River page?
Yeah, and as, and we can certainly add to it, and we will add to it if you see a need to.
Okay.
Supplement that. And we can, our goal was to use the General Manager Report, use that same data for the media or handouts or, you know.
Perfect, perfect, yeah. Yeah, so you're, you're, you're already well into it, so that's great.
So you'll see it at the, on the next, at the next board meeting. And if you have any comments or would like to see something different, let me know.
Okay.
And that's just on the domestic and conservation side.
You wouldn't happen to have a rough draft of that you could send me?
Yes.
Okay, could you send a rough draft?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thanks. And I'll, I'll know it's a rough draft.
Okay.
And you can comment.
All right, thanks. Other than that, that's, that's all the comments I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Director Bianco. And no comments. All right, and I think I'm going to pass as well. So, uh. We're already good. Yeah, and are there any board requests for future agenda items?
So I do have the chromium 6 pilot testing update, which, or I guess, which we'll do under departmental reports. And then there was a request for the better description on the lateral runs for the 10 projects under the $60 million loan. But I, I don't know that either of those are agenda items. I can take care of those either today with Steve's report and then get an email out and then the water management information. We can get that out as well.
Thank you. Thanks. So on to meetings. Looks like we have several from Director Estrada. Why don't you go ahead and take those in order, the first four?
Okay. Okay, the first one titled here called Water Check-In with Leadership Council. That was the call I had with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. You know that they're, they're involved with the Oasis Park and, and the issues that they're having there. And they just wanted a call to get a, an update or get some more information as it related to the funding that we had received from the state water board, I believe, maybe a year ago or so, that was specifically for emergency, hauled water to Oasis in the case that it was needed. So we talked about that and, and that was the purpose of that meeting. On August 4th, prep, prep call for principals meeting. I, I'm not sure if you reported on this, John. I, I just had it on my calendar. And I didn't see it as, as something that was listed on my sheet. So, so I reported it as a, as a meeting. This was a, the call that we had the day prior to our meeting of the principals with the Agua Caliente and Desert Water Agency. That was a phone call. And then on August 11th, conference call with the state regarding the draft, the Northlake Project Supply Assessment Review. That was the beginning of the team that's made up of the county of Riverside staff, the consultant who's doing the design, some of the design, and folks from the state and the policy authority kind of beginning to look at different supply options or water supply options, whether it's drain water, canal water, groundwater, and, and kind of look at a, at a different categories to, to, to do the assessment, including water quality, supply, reliability, et cetera, et cetera. And then on the 24th, Eastern Coachella Valley Task Force meeting, that, that was a follow-up meeting from the, the meetings that have been set by various folks that are looking at addressing issues in the East Valley related to arsenic contamination of various water systems, a lot of which are regulated by EPA. So this, this meeting is kind of, kind of spearheaded by, by EPA, by the administrator, Matteus Pan. And so it's a roundtable discussion of EPA, BIA, CBWD, the county, congressman's office, assembly member's office, supervisor's office, and the state water board is really what kind of makes up this, this task force. And it's, it's, you know, agency-to-agency conversations about where we're at with projects. If, if perhaps we're having issues with, with particular items that might be under the purview of, of specific agency. We, we, at this meeting, they've communicated that we were trying to acquire some easements on Avenue 66 or the Avenue 66 water project that we're working on. And so we were able to communicate that to the BIA, EPA. And I think there are some conversations happening to try to move along some of those easement issues. And that was that meeting. Those are the four, first four meetings.
Thank you. Urban Water Institute, Director Nelson.
Yeah, so that was over in San Diego on the 24th and 25th. It was kind of a typical urban water conference. Bill Hazenkamp was on a panel with USBR and Central Arizona Project, Ted Cook, which was, you know, good, good discussion on Colorado River issues. And Bill did a great job at outlining what Matt's done over the last 10 years in terms of water conservation and ICS development. Like me, the 1.5 million acre feet of elevation, which is to the benefit of Arizona. And so that was a highlight to keep them, you know, out of, out of shortage.
out of shortage and, uh, tears and so forth. So that was a real good discussion. And, uh, Ted talked about, uh, you know, the Central Arizona Project, and, um, it's interesting to hear from him that all of the stored water that they've had over the years, uh, uh, may or may not be recoverable. Uh, and they don't really have systems to, uh, recover their groundwater in times of drought like Coachella does. And it's a little surprising that, you know, agencies would, would have a groundwater recharge and then program and then not monitor who pulls out of it and not have infrastructure to put it back in their canal. It's just, it's just amazing. So there was that discussion. Um, and, um, uh, I was able to kind of network with, uh, a number of people involved on Colorado River, and there were some big growers in there. So that was good.
And, uh, Director, uh, oh, yeah, yeah. Salt and Sea 30, Director Estrada.
Yeah, that's our, our regular, uh, meeting of the Salt and Sea Authority. We had a, a presentation, uh, other than just kind of the, the regular items that we cover. We had a pretty lengthy presentation by, um, Alianza, um, who is a nonprofit that operates, uh, and around the Salt and Sea communities like North Shore, Mecca, um, Salt City. And, uh, they had a, 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 a presentation on, on outreach. Um, there are some dollars that are, um, being made available from the state to start, uh, a lot of the, the outreach component of, of projects. And so, um, I believe that there's an opportunity to partner with Alianza, who has a strong presence in the community. So they kind of wanted us to kind of hear a little bit about their ideas and, and who they are and what they've done. And then there was a pretty lengthy conversation on Colorado River water issues, uh, related to the drought and, uh, the potential cutbacks. Um, everybody kind of chimed in on that, including, uh, Imperial County, um, IID, we have comments, Riverside County had comments. And, uh, so everybody's kind of, you know, keeping an eye on that. And I think, uh, at least the sentiment of that conversation from the Salt and Sea Authority's perspective was one of, you know, making sure that, that, uh, the Salt and Sea, um, is, is a component of, of, of the negotiations and that it is addressed, um, uh, as, as these conversations continue to happen. Uh, I, I think you're all aware that the concern is that it would just continue to accelerate the, um, fly out that's, uh, going to be exposed by, by further, uh, cutbacks. And so those, those were kind of the, the general comments of, of all of the, uh, members of the Salt and Sea Authority who were, who commented and, and, and were there.
Okay. Thanks. Seven Basin States, Director.
Yeah, so from San Diego, I went right over to, uh, Salt Lake City with the seven Basen States, uh, to talk about, uh, you know, what's, uh, what we can be doing. Um, the, the Upper Basin has this five-point plan out. Uh, it doesn't produce any water at all. It's a, it's five points of, uh, planning guidance to, for the Upper Basin. Um, and so, um, they, uh, they rest on that. Um, and so the Lower Basin had some really good discussions, uh, amongst, uh, Arizona and California in terms of how to come about, uh, with, uh, some of these volumes of water. Uh, and, uh, there was a lot of discussion with the Bureau about, uh, there's three legs really for California to stand on. And the first leg is, uh, uh, Salt and Sea, to address the Salt and Sea, to have the federal government involved with the state government. And that's, uh, that's kind of number one that, you know, really nothing can be done until there's some sort of agreement between the feds and the state. And, um, and so in this process, I know that, uh, Commissioner Tooten and, uh, Secretary Crowfoot are having some, uh, great discussions about what that looks like and how they can come to agreement on, on working together to mitigate Salt and Sea issues. I mean, you look at Lake Powell, uh, it's, it's, I mean, if you see pictures of Lake Powell, it's unbelievably, uh, empty. Um, Lake Mead is, Lake Mead, you see the bathtub ring. Um, but if you look at aerial photos, it's, it's rather stark and, and there, there's probably not a, a realistic expectation that the Salt and Sea would, would be, uh, you know, full, uh, in times where Mead and Powell are so low. And so that, that partnership between the feds and the, and the state is, is critically important. And then, uh, a lot of discussion about compensated conservation and with the Bureau and what that looks like. And, uh, this last week, they had a, a big planning session and, um, uh, we're coming out with some feedback from, from that as well. Um, and then, of course, the, the, with the third, uh, prong of California's, um, uh, positioning is that all, all the boards would have to approve. Uh, I mean, we can talk and talk and get a framework, but it's really the boards that would have to approve. Uh, and, you know, Coachella's been out about, uh, uh, very publicly about the fact that we would participate proportionately to what, uh, the Imperial irrigation would, would, uh, conserve. And so we're, we're working to, to, to those eight hands in those discussions. So that, that pretty much sums it up.
Yeah, thank you. August 26th, NL Pilot Project, Director Estrada.
Yes, that's, uh, NL stands for, uh,
Is that what that is?
North Lake, that's North Lake Pilot Project. And, um, that was a follow-up meeting that I just reported on, uh, on August 11th. Uh, there were several, um, data requests that, that, uh, the, 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 the group that was working on the supply assessment review felt, uh, needed to be provided in order to really, uh, continue to do the assessment. And so a lot of that information was, uh, information that was provided by CBWD. Um, prior to the August 26th meeting, it included, uh, water quality information, um, drainage, volume, uh, things of that nature. Um, and, and, uh, so we, uh, had this, this call to review that, uh, that, the data that was provided.
Okay. And then on the 29th, um, we had our annual board interview with the auditor. This is a financial audit. And, uh, I did that on Zoom. I think we're gonna be okay. August 29th, media engagements with Wade Crowfoot, Director Nelson.
So, yeah, after Arizona and Nevada had thrown a bunch of, uh, bombs at, at California in terms of, uh, our willingness to participate in conservation programs, uh, I, we, we had, uh, three calls set up with the media, with, uh, Secretary Crowfoot and myself representing the Colorado River Board of California. Um, and, uh, we discussed, uh, uh, the negotiations and what was happening. And, and, you know, Wade really does have a good handle on what's happening. And, and Chris, uh, has done an excellent job at keeping, uh, CNRA informed, DWR informed about what's happening, uh, which is vitally important. And so, uh, Wade does a great job at communicating. And he was down here, uh, you know, a couple days later, and, uh, I'm sure he did a great job as well. So.
Great. Um, next three are well, uh, related. Director Estrada.
Okay, so on August, uh, 31st, uh, we had a, a call with, uh, with, uh, folks that were going to be part of this, this workshop. Uh, all the panelists, uh, got together to kind of brief on the setup and, and, uh, the way things were gonna roll out. And that included folks from the state, from here, CBWD, and, um, um, some other folks from, I believe, um, agricultural, uh, uh, board. And, uh, so, so that was a prep call. And then, um, the, uh, let's see here. Oh, and, and then on the 6th, was that, with the, on the 6th, we had the actual, the actual workshop. Uh, I was there as a, as a presenter. And that, that went well. Um, there was a lot of information that was covered. Uh, keynote speakers for Assembly Member Garcia, Secretary Wade Crowfoot, and Chair of, uh, State Water Board, Joaquin Esquivel. Uh, and they kind of, uh, gave up a presentation on, on, on issues, I think primarily surrounding climate change and, and the drought, uh, which, which was informative. And then, um, and then on the, on the 6th, uh, that same day, there was a press conference. I, I wouldn't call it a well-pressed conference, if you could maybe make an edit on that on the minutes. Uh, that, that was a press conference that was, uh, that was, uh, requested by the state of California. They have a, what they call Safe Our Water Program. And they wanted to, uh, take advantage of the fact that you had Wade and, uh, and Joaquin here in the valley, uh, and other, uh, local leaders to, to do a, a conference related to why it's important to conserve the drought, uh, and, and kind of, you know, uh, put that messaging out. It's something that they're doing, uh, up and down California, uh, in different regions. And so they wanted to, 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 to do that in our region as well. I think they've, they've done it once, but it was, uh, something they did maybe in Palm Springs, uh, where they kind of partnered up with Desert Water Agency. Uh, this was more of a partnership between, uh, Safe Our Water Program Campaign and CBWD, uh, and with others participating as well. So if you, if you could just, uh, make that change on the minute. And then, uh, Director Bianco was there too. So Director Bianco could make some comments on, he has additional comments on the workshop.
I think you covered it.
Yeah. And actually, I attended by, um, Zoom on that. I could see the backs of everyone's heads that were in the audience. I saw you. I saw you. I saw Scott. There was a bunch of people there. I think it was mostly us. Oh, yeah, I saw Zoe's presentation too. Where did she go?
There was more staff there than anything.
Yeah. And, and you know what? I, 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 I think I really wanna, you know, there was a lot of staff, uh, Scott, Victoria, um, Jim, you were there. And, uh, I think I'm forgetting some people, but, uh, uh, I think, you know, Zoe did a wonderful job. She was, she was first up, uh, as a presenter. And, you know, she, she really laid out, uh, our available supplies and projections of the future and really kind of showing that, you know, we're doing a great job as it relates to, uh, managing our aquifer, um, being sustainable. And I think that was a, a great message for us to share with, with folks that were present and listening.
Thank you. All right. And then we had the, another Salt and Sea North Lake, uh, meeting on the 8th. Director Estrada.
Uh, yes, uh, that was, um, that was a, a follow-up to, uh, these meetings that I've been talking about, that I reported on, related to the water supply assessment for the North Lake Pilot Project. So after we reviewed the, the data that was provided, uh, and reviewed it back in, uh, late August, um, we are still kind of working. And when I say we, I mean the team. At this point, uh, CBWD is now involved also, uh, through staff. Um, and there was a question as it related to the, the reality of being able to move Colorado River water or doing transfers. As you recall, we had, had conversations about trying to see if perhaps we could secure, um, some water, uh, through some of the portfolio water that we have for Roseville and maybe, uh, if the state was willing to purchase it, we could move it. Um, I think the state just wanted to, and so our meeting was with the state with, um, with, uh, folks that are working on, on this particular project, which is, uh, California Natural Resources, uh, through their department working on Salt and Sea policy. And they just really wanted to ask the question, uh, the, the straight-up question, can, can we, is, can we move water through the, uh, Colorado sys, Colorado River system? And I think we gave them the answer of, um, kind of the difficulty that we're in right now and, and, uh, that maybe not being such a possibility. And, and I think they, they took the message and perhaps moving forward now, the, the focus, uh, as we move through the supply assessment is, is really gonna be on, on drainage water and, and groundwater or a potential blend of both. So, so that was the purpose of that.
Okay. Other meetings, I had one that wasn't listed. September 8th, I had a Zoom with, uh, sort of as an advance on our strategic planning sessions with Ed Means. Is that the right name? Ed Means and Robert Chang was on there. Let's see, Robert. Uh, going over, um, just my thoughts and what I was hoping to, what the benefit I thought might be of those, uh, two strategic planning sessions that we have coming up. It's actually, I thought it was a really good conversation.
Good.
Other meetings?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I had a meeting on, as well, on September 7th. Um, it was, uh, economics of water conservation. And it was California Agencies, Matt, PBID, IID, and ourselves, uh, talking about, uh, the economics of water conserva, conservation. So, uh, it was a good meeting, uh, kind of sets up the, the multi-state conversations. Um, and then on, uh, September 8th, the day after, um, I, um, you know, watched through Zoom, the IID Ag Advisory Committee, uh, uh, water meetings. And they're always very interesting. Uh, they're, they're, they're the advisory committee, of course, informing the board and the staff about, you know, the Imperial growers' positions on, um, um, economics of water conservation. So, very interesting.
Yeah. What is the, the compensation right now? Is 285?
Yeah. So they, they have a program going where it was 285 for, um, QSA.
Per acre foot.
Per acre foot, right? And so, uh, when, uh, they were having excess conservation, they took that back down to about 180. And so the, the growers were, uh, quite dissatisfied with that number. But it did reduce the conservation produced. And so it did exactly what they needed because they, they only have about 50,000 acre foot of storage in Lake Mead as a sub-account under Metropolitan. And so once they filled that up, uh, you know, they had no place to put their conserve water. So they were, uh, uh, you know, lowering their, their expectations.
Dialing it back a little, yeah.
Back. So, uh, at, uh, at 280, and it's, it's interesting to hear that, that, like at the Ag Advisory Committee, you know, to hear the growers, uh, talking about, you know, the costs that they base on, on, um, you know, actual conservation, uh, costs and so forth. And, you know, like, uh, like I was hearing on the radio this morning, you know, bread and wheat is, uh, up 16% from last year. And, uh, obviously those costs come from increased production costs and a lack of availability. And so these are all factors that, that come into the, you know, how can we effectively, you know, compensate, uh, growers, uh, in a fair way without, uh, without, uh, you know, hurting them unduly, but at the same time not drought profiteering.
Okay. Other meetings?
Yes, uh, Chair, I, I have one meeting also on the 9th. That was last Friday. That was the, the, uh, third, uh, state Safe for Advisory Group meeting for, uh, FD 200. Uh, as you know, we meet four times a, a year. Um, and we, uh, try to advise the State Water Board on, every year they, they allocate, uh, the expenditure plan, um, that, that kind of breaks up the, the budget into, um, into target priorities, uh, ranging from interim water supply. uh, ranging from interim water supplies, technical assistance. Um, they have these new folks that they call administrators now, that, that, uh, are, are really kind of engineering firms that enter into master agreements with the state for purposes of, of managing projects, uh, for, for small systems that perhaps don't have the resources to, to really take on those, those complex projects. Uh, they, they have, uh, sections for planning. Uh, they also have money for direct O and M support and money for construction. Uh, and this year, um, a lot of the, the bulk of the money is being concentrated on interim water supplies and emergencies. Um, with the priority given to systems that are failing due to, uh, water contamination and, and maybe setting some aside for systems that are being impacted by the drought in case that, uh, there is no money, uh, available to other drought programs. But, but, but it's a, the priority would, would be for water quality issues, not necessarily drought issues. Uh, so, uh, there's about, and there was already some money that was carried over by, uh, uh, last year, so that actually this year's expenditure plan for this particular pot of money, uh, is about 177 million. Um, they are starting to create these, um, these, uh, categories of what I mentioned, pilot projects. And so, I, I kind of look at this particular pot of money as a potential source of funding as we continue to, um, address the issue of Chromium six. I, it is something that I continue to bring up to the State Water Board that, that we, we have a, a huge Chromium six issue. Um, the, the legislature already made this money available for PFOS issues in other areas in the state, primarily urban areas, maybe like in the LA area. Uh, but I tell them, you know, we don't have a PFOS issue here, we have a Chromium six issue. So, um, as we try to create categories for, for potential funding, we, we need to think about how the Chromium six conversation fits into this. So, they're open to that. Um, so I'm happy to hear Steve Bigley's update and see if there's perhaps any chance that we might be able to benefit from some of these funds that are becoming available. I, I, they might, it might not work, uh, you know, I know that the schedules are, are, are tight sometimes, and a lot of times, some of these funding, uh, options are, are lengthy. So I just kind of wanted to let you all know that, that, uh, they are thinking about the Chromium six of, as, as, as potential, uh, funding that might be available to systems that, at, at this point, I think are considered at risk because of, uh, emerging constituents of concern. That's it.
Thank you. Good. Is there a motion to approve, uh, the meetings reported on?
I'll move approval of the, uh, board, uh, meeting schedules.
Second?
Uh, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Proof four, and, uh, onto the General Manager Report.
Yes, sir, just one item this morning, the COVID update. Uh, we have had 350 recovered qualifying cases, about 66% of staff, assuming that's a static number. Um, right now, we have zero qualifying cases, um, but we have two folks, uh, off work due to COVID-related situations where a household member has produced a positive result. Uh, and we still have about 87% of staff that have documented proof of vaccination. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Council?
Yes, Mr. President, just wanted to mention the EPA came out with its, uh, uh, Support Plan for Water Systems in terms of providing assistance to deal with, with, uh, the cybersecurity issues and to, and to prevent, uh, cybersecurity threats. Uh, this was part of the, the, the bipartisan infrastructure law, which required the US EPA, uh, to develop the Support Plan and to prioritize public water systems, uh, that need assistance in addressing the timelines for the, uh, support for, uh, us. They worked in terms of, of trying to prevent cyber, uh, uh, security threats and to help them set up systems in order to i- identify and to prevent further vulnerabilities and risk assessments, so. And, and then one other thing I wanted to mention was the EPA did come out with this proposed ruling on, uh, PFOS. Uh, it, uh, has released, uh, with a 60-day time period for public comment, uh, a regulation under CIRCLA law that would, uh, now actually, uh, state that PFOS is something for which they can designate and require and, uh, to impose liability on those responsible agencies that may be in the chain of command or chain of control of an EPFOs, uh, material. So we'll keep, keep track of both of those EPA matters going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any departmental reports?
Yes, sir, we have two. Uh, we'll get Steve up first because I think, uh, Director Estrada mentioned that he might, uh, have to step away momentarily at 10 o'clock. And then we've got Dan Charlton.
Uh, good morning. So as you know, there is no Chromium six MCL, and that's why it wasn't part of the PhD report that you heard earlier today. But the state is actively looking at, uh, adopting that first-in-the-world Chromium six standard. Um, they released an administrative draft in March that would have set the standard at 10 parts per billion, which is the same level that it was set at in 2014, prior to being withdrawn in 2017. So, they also had planned to release a formal draft, regulatory draft, in midsummer of this year. Um, the final adoption would have been scheduled for spring of 2023. We submitted significant comments on their administrative draft, including identifying some very specific and critical failures in their cost estimates. And we believe as a result of those comments, they are now gone back and revising their cost estimates for the rule, which is delaying their release of the formal draft. Currently, they say possibly in fall, that we, they're expecting to release that draft, which would likely delay the adoption of the final rule till maybe summer of 2023. So, it, another thing that was identified in their documents regarding their assessment of the treatment technologies, included comments related to Stennis chloride. And those comments, although it was not included as a best available technology, they did state that, um, it will be considered on a case-by-case basis as an alternative technology, that they do believe that it will be viable for some water systems in the state to use for reducing Chromium six. So, that was very, um, encouraging and good information to have documented from the state. So, now I'll give you an update on what we've done in regards specifically to Stennis chloride. So we completed a full-scale demonstration for one of our two domestic water systems, and that's the one that serves the Desert Hot Springs area along Dillon Road. That was completed in 2018. It was successful, it successfully demonstrated what we are able to meet the standard of Chromium six at 10 parts per billion in that water system. Uh, we have also, just recently, last week, we submitted an application to the state to execute an amendment to our permit so that would allow us to add Stennis chloride to that water system on a, in perpetuity, to reduce Chromium six levels. So we're very curious and interested to see how they, um, respond to that. We have already met with them a couple of times, and they were favorable to approving and authorizing us to move forward with Stennis chloride in that water system. Not as a demonstrative, not as a pilot, but actually implement it. So, um, we don't see any red flags, and we're, we're looking forward to that. So that could put us on track to come back to you in fall, possibly at the same time that a draft rule comes out to request approval of about $200,000 to install capital improvement facilities on the ID eight water system to comply with the proposed draft rule of 10 parts per billion. Remember, for that water system, because of the high sulfate levels that naturally occur in the groundwater, it was just north of $50 million to install ion exchange for that water system. So, the other water system, our Cove water system, our large water system, we have about 40% of our wells that have Chromium six levels above 10 parts per billion. We've done multiple simulated distribution system monitoring in our laboratory. So we've selected representative wells, and they have all proven successful in using the Stennis chloride for reducing Chromium six well below 10 parts per billion. We have also simulated the boosting of chlorination within our distribution system, which we do not do in ID eight. And again, it shows, it does not affect the effectiveness of the Stennis reduction process. Um, we also, it, something that we do in our Cove system that doesn't apply to ID eight is we mix water from wells that have, that would be treated for Chromium six with wells that don't get treated with Chromium six. We simulated that also in our laboratory, and we did it for an extended period of time, up to 28 days, much longer than the test we did for ID eight. All proved successful, the highest level we saw in that test was 3.9 parts per billion. Uh, we also, in this recent test, it included two other water systems located here in the Coachella Valley, and the results for their testing also successfully demonstrated, uh, low levels of Chromium six after being treated with Stennis. Um, and that completes the, if you have any questions?
Great. You should write a book.
Hey, Steve, do you know of any other districts that are, that are contemplating the use of Stennis chloride in, in their Chromium six treatment?
I've gotten a lot of calls, um, and a lot of them are very interested, and they're, look forward to seeing, um, how we progress. Um, they're kind of, they, they feel they don't need to do those tests because we've done so much on it, but they are all very interested in it. And, in fact, during the workshops that the state recently held, you know, in spring of this year, uh, Stennis was brought up by some of the commenters, and, um, so the state is very interested also in Stennis, uh, but it, right now, they just didn't include it as one of the best available technologies, but it can be approved on a case-by-case basis.
They're all going to use it. They're all going to use it.
Uh, uh, so there will be some water systems where they may not be able to use it, and that would be the very small number of systems that have Chromium six levels above 30 to 32 parts per billion. If they add chlorine, they're going to get some reoxidation. They may not be able to, um, consistently demonstrate ability to be below 10 parts per billion. So fortunately, we don't have any wells in that category. Our highest level's about 22 parts per billion, which included a well in our ID eight water system, which we already successfully demonstrated.
Yeah, good.
Great.
Great, uh, great, great, great update, Steve. Thank you for, for kind of being on top of it, and hopefully, uh, as the state continues to move their dates, you're hopefully moving your dates. And, and you don't, uh, you don't leave us before this all concludes because you're, you're obviously a wealth of knowledge and, and experience, and, uh, you know, we, 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 this, this whole Chromium six issue for, for our valley, I think, you know, rests a lot, uh, with, with your understanding of it, uh, the understanding of how the state moves. And so, um, you know, I don't know how those dates match with, with your own personal, uh, uh, plans, but hopefully they, they match.
I'm not going to leave you guys, so just don't worry. I'll be here whether I'm here, working with you, or retired somewhere. I'm still here to support the cause, and I'll be here as a support for you either way.
And don't tell the state about the 3.9. To give them any bright ideas.
In our ID eight water system, uh, we showed that we could meet a standard no higher than 8.5, uh, uh, I'm sorry.
No lower than?
No lower than 8.5 parts per billion. So, um, I think, uh, we're, we're in a good spot for, uh, complying with a 10-part-per-billion standard, which appears to be the direction the state is taking.
Yes, good. Thank you.
Great, and then I ask Dan to, uh, perhaps explain to the board, we've had a couple of very dramatic, uh, climate events recently, and, uh, the board might be interested in knowing how the operations and facilities staff has responded.
Yeah, you got video? No video?
I have a video coming up on the second board meeting in October.
Okay, good. All right, great.
Um, good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, first of all, before we get to the, uh, curtailment event, I just want to update everybody on the storm.
It is now? But regardless, um, we got a little more than a inch of rain in a couple of the watersheds, but in theory, knock on wood, uh, we skirted the storm, or threaded the needle quite well, uh, the remnants of Hurricane K. Uh, but we still, you know, even though there's minor damages, we say, it's still two to three months of cleanup that we're going to do over time, and we'll schedule and prioritize that, uh, as needed. Uh, coincidentally, right when I said we were almost done, that we did our inspections yesterday, we got about 1,000 CFS in Whitewater at, just before 5:00 PM yesterday. It was a bunch of debris flow out of Whitewater Canyon, and of course, the debris plugged some of our sluicing structures and caused a bunch of damage. So we probably have four to six weeks to work up there, uh, immediately. Uh, so we mobilized already, um, to make sure that we're ready to take water in December, should they be delivering anything of our 35,000 or whatever it may be, or 15,000. But, um, on a, I guess, like, August 31st, I think it was, the governor declared a state of emergency, looking to shed, uh, 4,000 megawatts throughout the state of power. Um, we have newly, um, classified and hired a water management analyst in our op- operations group to help optimize our flows. So, in, in preparation of that and to test our, uh, new skills and to challenge the envelope, um, we, I requested that they curtail every, every well, um, between 4:00 and 9:00 PM where possible. Um, they, they were a little shocked, uh, to say the least, and uncomfortable, but we looked at our well prioritization plan. Uh, 38 of our wells have permanent generators. Uh, there's another 18 portable generators that we can take out, um, for any of our facilities. Um, long story longer, we were able to shut off 80 pumps. Um, and over six days, we saved over 68 megawatts, believe it or not. Um, we even changed some of our limits on our reservoirs to maybe, to be able to make sure that we, uh, take our pumping flows off-peak and store the water to make sure that we could miss those events. Concurrently, we're working on a program with SCE on, and their consultant, Intersponse, whereby, um, they're helping us, um, provide some capital for some new PLCs to align with our, uh, Aviva new SCADA system. And they had six curtailment events at the same time that they requested, uh, during this, uh, hot weekend. And we, because we had strategically optimized in advance, we were able to have all those, uh, shedding events or curtailment done, uh, before they even asked for it, which I think is fantastic. Um, we did have to take out three portable generators for three critical well sites over that timeframe. Um, but, um, I think we, I, I want to commend staff for the, the job that they did, working outside their comfort zone. Uh, optimization is something that we always do, but again, 68 megawatts and $100,000 in savings in power over five and a half days is, is what we ended up with. And, um, it's just a great starting point as we continue to move forward, continue to get a little more sophisticated, especially on our domestic water system, and optimize. Uh, lastly, I will have a video. Um, I wanted to say yesterday, uh, we've had the Geotab, uh, in works for, uh, about four months now.
You might just want to explain what the Geotab is.
Sorry, our new, uh, GPS camera, video vehicle fleet system. Uh, uh, we had it in operation for over four months. Uh, we, yesterday was day five, where we had more than 240 vehicles on the roadway, traveling more than 10,000 miles, uh, 45 to 50 miles a day, and we received a 100% scorecard. So we're averaging daily over 99.5% on a safety scorecard, which I'll explain how that all works in the database. Um, but I just did want to commend staff for that as well. We're headed in the right direction in regards to getting our insurances back and providing a safer environment. They've slowed down, um, the safety scorecards are fantastic. We're developing a matrix as far as a progressive disciplinary action program. And, um, yeah, I think the second board meeting, I'll have a video and a, and show some of the camera highlights, so. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see our vehicles driving down the fast lane, passing your vehicles.
Yeah, it looks a little strange. Yeah, doing, especially if they're hauling a trailer and they're doing like 60 miles an hour, they're getting lapped, but we are being safe. We have slowed them down significantly, and it's like benefit and a safety to us and our customers.
Yeah, that's really great to hear. Hey, Dan, I remember hearing, I just don't even know, maybe it was last week on one of the state of California energy advisories, and they say, you know, flex your power, turn it off between 4:00 and 9:00. But they also said, in one of them, and I only heard it was, don't use water between 4:00 and 9:00, which is kind of interesting, you know? And I thought about our system and how we have tanks that are elevated to create these pressure zones. So if somebody uses their tap water in the middle of the day, it doesn't necessarily trigger a power event. Is that true? I mean, and especially now that we're, you're doing your, you're not pumping during those hours, so you have to fill those tanks during the other hours, right, to create the pressure that lasts?
Right.
During the 4:00 to 9:00 window?
If there are other agencies that don't have the ability to store as much water and shed during on-peak, I could see shutting off water keeps the storage in the reservoir. So it's an indirect same thing as turning off the pumps type of thing, so I get that. But I do think that strategically, we're very blessed to be able to have this program. And in addition, we have the new PLCs, programmable logic controls whereby we can relay and remote some of these things, we can control them automatically. It'll be fantastic as we move forward. So it's an indirect request to shut off the pumps during on-peak, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I don't, I don't think we should go to, I mean, of course, outdoors, you don't want to be irrigating your lawn in the summer between 4:00 and 9:00.
And if it's raining, you shouldn't be.
Between 4:00 and 7:00.
Dan, you quoted some cost savings, 100,000, I think, in power costs. Is that the rate differential between daytime rates and evening rates? Because you still have to go back and fill up the reservoirs.
Yeah, you're filling it off-peak versus on-peak. The delta between the two, it depends on the day in which time of use we have for various wells, but it's, yeah, it's in the range of 25 cents sometimes. Between 2:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the afternoon. So that is the delta between the two.
Yeah, I get it.
Very good. Yeah, great.
I have a question that I'm curious on is, it seems like the valley got, some got over an inch, some got a little less than an inch. Why didn't the wash fill up like it normally does?
Well, I'd like to say that the wash does. So again, it depends where the water hits, where the epicenter of a storm is. It depends if it gets caught in the mountains or if it's able to continue on rapidly through the valley. But I do believe that we didn't get any major situations where a formation got caught or trapped on the mountain. When it's dumping and the cloud stays there and it can't continue to move across, that's when we're in trouble, and we didn't get any thus far.
The city's put the flooded sign at the washes before it flooded because everybody was anticipating it, and I thought for sure we were going to get it, but it didn't happen.
Yeah, I mean, perfect.
You got some in deep canyon wash, which was, a lot of times, you don't get any in there.
And didn't you have some at Dillon Road down?
We had it all over the valley a little bit. Again.
The wash didn't flow. I mean, you could go.
I was going at the wash at Dillon?
So what I would say is, one-year Box Canyon got hit really bad, one-year Mecca got hit really bad.
Yeah, it's different.
The one where the wash flew, flowed and fed on Valentine's Day, 2019, that was whitewater. That wasn't any rain in any of the watersheds in this vicinity.
Came from the mountain.
It was snow melt and rain flows and whitewater that came down. None of the other cities really got hit at all, so it completely depends on where it hits. If it hits everywhere, yeah, I'll retire with Steve.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I did miss one thing from my general counsel's report. My colleague Jeremy Holm will be covering for me at the next board meeting. This is the first board meeting that where it overlapped with the vacation. Jeremy has been involved with a number of things at the district. He was the one that shepherded through the redistricting process. He has a lot of experience in the area of general counsel and board meetings. So with your understanding, Jeremy will be at the next meeting at the end of the month, and then I'll catch up next time. So thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. We have a lot of things to bring up, Dan. Okay.
We'll throw him some curveballs.
All right. I'm sure he'll do fine. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Dan.
We'll see. Yeah, we'll test him.
Fresh meat.
All right. So at this time, the board reassessed in the closed session to consider the items on the agenda items, items 13A through.
On the third page.
Q?
Q.
And we will reconvene following the closed session to report out of any action that Good? All right, so regular meeting is reconvene. We do not have any reportable action from our closed session, and with no further business, we are adjourned.